Okay, calling to order, the work session meeting of the Board of Trustees, Village Port Jefferson, it's November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and it is five oh one. Clerk Pirlo, can you please confirm the presence of a quorum?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mayor Sheppard?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Giuliano?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Laux?
Present.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Trustee Hill?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Ugrinsky?
Here.
Thank you. Attorney Moran will be joining us shortly, and Treasurer Gathka is with us as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to see you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a special presentation from our grants manager and administrator, Lisa Maddow. Lisa's been working with the village for approximately five months, Lisa?
Since May.
Since May, and we've made some really amazing progress with her working and representing the village in the management of all of our grants, and there are a lot. I think when we counted, probably about nineteen or twenty, Stephen, is that right? When we were calculating how many grants are outstanding or in progress?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're really appreciative of having Lisa work on a basis of full part-time. And so, we're happy to have you here today to present some, a status update.
Great, thank you for having me. Oh, okay, there we go. Okay, so, the village is involved in several different types of grants. We have competitive versus non-competitive grants, and the village is part of all of those. There are federal, state, county, town, and foundational. Competitive means that when we applied for those grants, we had to earn points for having certain criteria to be awarded that grant. Sometimes it's based on if there was storm damage, if there was, if it's going to a blighted area, things like that are what allow us to gain actual points, or if we have any plans, which the village does have several plans in the works, and also some that are already on the books and different studies. We also have downtown revitalization, pro-housing is one of our goals, infrastructure capital improvements is another goal, and our flood hazard mitigation. These are all grants that we are looking for. The non-competitive ones, meaning that if we just apply, you automatically get those grants. So, under the federal grants, we have our COVID forty-four eighty grant. That one actually is the actual grant for supplies for COVID closed out, but we still had the supply management portion of it, so we filed for that. It's a hundred percent reimbursement, and we're at the point now where we're just waiting for the twelve hundred so dollars to come in the mail. Hopefully, by December, we should have that check that you can be able to put into the budget. The forty-four eighty flood study, that's... Sure. The forty-four eighty study, New York State Hazard Mitigation Study for Flood Reduction, that's a FEMA grant. The grant funding's two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The total project's three hundred and so thousand dollars. That's a ninety to ten percent reimbursement. So, we have a fully executed contract. We're in the middle of putting together the RFP that we're going to be going out with very shortly. I've already signed the resolution to prepare for that, so we're going to get out, get our consulting engineers to perform that study. So, we're at that point there.
That's a two-part study, no? Or is that one?
Right now, that is two-part because it's the study and then the beginnings of the plan implementation.
Okay.
And when you say a ninety-ten, what does that mean?
So, the FEMA is reimbursing us ninety percent of the cost versus the ten percent that the village has to put in.
But we lay out the hundred percent, and then we get on...
Then you get reimbursed after, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Ninety percent of it you get reimbursed. The next federal grant we have is called the DR forty-six fifteen. That was from Hurricane Ida. So, that is for the Crystal Brook Hollow Recharge Basin, the old Homestead Oakwood Road over there, there's, I guess we'll call it a sump. That also came from FEMA, and we're working with Dishes. That budget, there's a hundred percent reimbursement for roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. We have a fully executed contract now. The project has had an extension filed. Eighty percent of that project is already complete, and we just got the approval to submit, and we submitted partial reimbursement payment, so we should be expecting about eight hundred thousand dollars to come back soon for that. So, I'm very glad to hear that. There's a part-two to it. It's an additional public assistance mitigation plan. That's for another two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We filed for that hundred percent reimbursement for the scope of work change, and we are waiting for the final approval for that. That's to give us three more installations of three detention ponds, repositioning of seven dry wells, engrading and reseeding in the area. I mean, the problem is, as they had made plans to fix things, more storms kept happening and causing more damage.
So, they rethought the scope of work?
Yep. The next one is called the two thousand and twenty-four oh-two-five-three Coastal Zone Consistency East Bluff, East Beach Bluff Stabilization Phase Two. That's also a FEMA grant. That is for three million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the five million that it's actually costing, and that match is seventy-five twenty-five. The deadline for that, to have that complete, is September two thousand and twenty-six. The project has been approved, that was just recently, and the funds have been obligated this past September, and they can begin the work. So, install and steel sheeting and the removal of the adjacent structures. So, now we get into the whole process of fixing that area.
Request for proposals.
Yep, RFP. Our New York State grants, you have a project that was called the Six Acre Park Planning Project. That was to plan for a park. The project cost is two hundred thousand dollars for the planning. The deadline to complete this project is December of two thousand and twenty-eight. That was the max award, so there's no matching. You're just going to be getting the two hundred thousand once the project is complete and all the work is done. However, in looking at that project, that's one of the capital budget priorities that you're going to be reevaluating to see if that's where we want to spend a bulk of the money, because that project to actually do the park is coming in way over price.
And because we are one point two million dollars in the negative in our capital fund?
Right, that's a problem.
We don't have the money to do that right now?
Yes, so that's on hold. The next one is the New York State Empire Restore New York Round Seven. That is for Conifer Two demolition only of that complex in Main Street, where they are going to be building apartments. The grant is for two hundred thousand, two hundred million, sorry, out of the thirty-two or so million dollars that it's going to be costing the Conifer to build that construction and demolition. So, the reimbursement is for the demolition and that pre-planning, and that is the max grant award, and they have till June two thousand and twenty-five. We have our award letter. The demolition is underway. We've had our meetings with the state, ESD, and we have a whole work plan in order so that they can go ahead and do that. And VHB was retained as the management consultants that we'll be working with directly and through Conifer to make sure that they're hitting all their deadlines and, you know, everything that they need to do to stay on track for the demolition. We also have our Station Street Construction Project. That was several years ago, that was actually completed last year. The deadline to close this grant out is actually February two thousand and twenty-four. That was a fifty-fifty reimbursement for the Port Jefferson to build that street. It's connected to where the Long Island Railroad parking lot was, that new street right there. That was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of about six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. It came in a little bit under what they had originally projected. The work is complete. The closeout packet has been received, and we submitted all the paperwork that they need, so now we're just basically waiting for them to give us the okay to close out everything and get reimbursed. And hopefully, by December, that'll be coming. Another one that I've been working on is the New York State DEC Municipal Infrastructure Grant. Again, these, those grants go back all the way to two thousand and seventeen. These were for the ZEV charging stations. This one in particular was Baker's Alley Parking Lot. You'll see that there's two charging stations there. I have, that's a reimbursement that we're hoping of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars out of the twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollar cost. We have till May of two thousand and twenty-four, but all the paperwork is in, and I'm working with that project manager to have all this submitted. I'm just waiting for her to send me the reimbursement packet so that we can submit all the invoices and being reimbursed. This project was complete quite a while ago. We also have our Expansion Public Works, our DPW grant. That also was complete quite a while ago. The deadline was August twenty-second, but we did not have a executed contract with DASNY, and so, I'm hopeful that we will be getting that paperwork very shortly so that we can begin to be able to close out this project and be reimbursed. You know, I'm hearing that it's in the financial offices up in the state, and once they get that paperwork, they will generate with DASNY the paperwork for us to fill out and create that package.
Yeah, so Senator Palumbo's office called me after, you know, we've been trying to find out where this money reimbursement, if it was possible to get it back, how, what's holding it up, why didn't we get it back before? So, for the past fifteen months, sixteen months, I've been making phone calls here and there and...
Submitting letters?
Written letters, asking for support, and Senator Palumbo's office came through two weeks ago and let us know that they have determined that the money will be reimbursed and have put in the paperwork through the Albany Budget Office, and we are waiting for the Budget Office to follow through, and we can't, it's not in the bank yet, but we're hopeful that it will be soon.
That fiscal process is now moving.
Process is underway, and we should be seeing that money back.
Which is a great thing.
Very grateful to the senator for doing that.
And then the next one, New York State Climate Resiliency Plan Grant. That is an eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollar portion that we would be reimbursed out of the hundred and ten thousand dollar full project, so that's a seventy-five twenty-five percent. I've been chairing the PAC recently, and we have a working draft plan that we've been going through, and I've been working with our project manager and CASA, the architects, and we have been on, we're on target right now to have that completed by May two thousand and twenty-five, excuse me, and I think we'll be progressing. I'll talk a little bit more later in another slide, but once we have that plan in place, that is going to afford us to apply for other types of grants, having that as an additional plan to reflect on, to get additional work done in the village that we definitely need for climate resiliency.
Just like that FEMA hazard planning grant, right?
Yes, and the pro-housing and all of those other things. Having all of those things help get us extra points for all the competitive grants. Another one we have is the Tuker House Acquisition and Rehabilitation Grant through DASNY as well. That's a two-parter, so the first part is five hundred thousand, and the second part is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The total project and all the paperwork that I have estimates the entire restoration of that house, purchase and restoration, to be one point two million dollars. The village was awarded that in January of two thousand and twenty-three. That's an eighty, twenty percent match. We have been working very closely with DASNY and literally talking to them every three or four days to continue with what do you need us to do in order to get this final approval and be able to purchase the house. And it's been now finally moving in a positive direction. Right now, I'm just waiting for some paperwork to come back from SHPO, which is just giving us the official designating that's a historical landmark, and then we can submit that paperwork, and then they will process our agreement, and then we can get forward with, we're getting reimbursed to be able to purchase, and hopefully have them directly cut the check to purchase the house and then begin the restoration. That's what we're really going for with DASNY. Then we have some Suffolk County grants. We have the Downtown Revitalization Grant Round Eighteen. That was going to be for Rocketship Park and Tennis Court Walkways. Again, that's a sixty-four thousand dollar project. Grant reimbursement out of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's a fifty-fifty. Our deadline to close that out is April two thousand and twenty-five, and again, that is one that the village is looking at as a hold right now because of the capital budget priorities being reevaluated, since it's going to be such a cost for walkways.
Excuse me, we also looked at the actual walkways around the tennis courts, and they're not that bad.
They don't look so bad.
They can be updated and repaired if needed by Parks Department, so it was not a priority to spend that money right now. I don't know if, do you have, you don't have ARPA in this report, do you?
No, I don't have ARPA.
ARPA funds, so, ARPA funds were awarded, I don't know, Stephen, when, four years ago or so, and we were allotted over eight hundred thousand dollars, something like that?
That's correct. Part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the village received eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand and change in relief funds due to revenue loss during the pandemic.
And so, they could be allocated for capital projects, correct?
Yes.
And so, we are repairing the walkways around Rocketship Park, the playground, Wind Lane, and other adjoining areas, and we're using ARPA funds to do that. So, it is a capital project. The RFP has been awarded, the grant, the job has been awarded, and we're waiting to get that started. So, that's an update because walkways are being done.
Pending weather, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and ARPA funds were, they're not a grant, that was...
Correct.
Right, correct. Jumpstart, Mill Creek Restoration, that funding is for planning, restoration, dredging, and daylighting. That grant was capped at five hundred thousand dollars, and it's a hundred percent, so there's no cost to the village to do this. The closeout is October two thousand and twenty-six. We have, the contract bracket has been processed. We sent it over in October, so we are working on getting together the RFP for the engineering and consulting. That's in the works right now, and that'll be posting very soon. And then, once we can choose our contractor, we can get started on that. So, it will be the consulting firm for engineering, and then to actually get the contractors to do the work that we need done.
And so, I'll look at the clerk Pirlo and ask, is that RFP out, or is it in process of being put out?
It's in process. Lisa and I discussed it at length today, and it will be, the legal notice will be next week to go.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we were just working on some consultant suggestions, on some wording to change, so we're working on that.
Okay.
We also have Downtown Revitalization Grant Round Nineteen Harbor Front Park Walkways. These were all park paths that were done in asphalt, and that closed out October two thousand and twenty-three, but we were in process, so they allow us to continue with the paperwork. Contract paperwork was approved, and we were waiting for, to receive that back from Suffolk County, but I've been in contact with them, and there is some language that was in the actual contract agreement that stated that it would be stamped concrete, which is different than the asphalt that went in. I've been back and forth with them to explain that we were still making it ADA compliant and working very hard to make sure that we were able to afford to do so much, and we were able to do a bigger area of park walkway because we switched to asphalt. So, I'm still waiting to hear back from that, but there is a chance that we may not be reimbursed for this grant because it was not the same material that was agreed upon several years ago when they made that contract.
So, what we did do is we talked to the town about it, because it was two grants. It was town funding and county funding, and we talked to the town to make sure that asphalt would be okay, and they said yes, and I think we maybe didn't have that same conversation...
Right, that didn't, I don't think that happened with Suffolk County in general. So, Town of Brookhaven said okay, and then they didn't say okay. Then the next one is Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Grant Round Twenty. That was for Endura Blend Coating at the crosswalks. Again, that's a reimbursement from the grant of about forty thousand dollars out of the eighty-one thousand dollars. We don't have a deadline yet because we didn't complete that whole process with the contract, and that scope of work change request we put in was because Endura Blend really, you can't find it, it's too, it's very, very costly and kind of like out of stock, I guess, around, but there are comparable other things that you can do. However, everything is very, very costly, and for those crosswalk areas, that's another thing that the village is looking at as that's a budget priority, is that falling into what we are really aligning our budget to go forward with.
Go back to the Harbor Front Park Walkway project. Did we have an executed contract from the county on that?
We signed everything, and we sent it to them, and then they didn't send it back, and then they called and said, oh, hey, wait a minute.
But we just did that.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't done when the award was actually...
The work was, they did the work before they had an executed contract.
Okay.
That one was done before.
No, that was done, that was done in last October, December, so, but...
The others were holding, we were holding till we had an actual contract in our hands.
When the county gave us that contract, when the county told us we had the money...
They went.
We didn't have a contract.
No.
So, we did the work without a contract.
Correct.
And we didn't know at that time that even, that, so that contract, that award was issued, I don't even know when.
I think it's a couple of years ago. It might have been two thousand and eighteen, the award letter?
So...
Yes, that's why we don't do anything until we have the contract in our hands.
Yeah, I, yeah, who knew? Who knew there wasn't one? And that there should have been one.
Another Suffolk County is the Suffolk County Omnibus Grant. This one is for Drowned Meadow Cottage. That is a grant typically gotten every year. It's not competitive, as long as you're applying, and then you're awarded from the Suffolk County Office of Parks and Recs. The grant is for ten thousand. That is for Coper, I don't want to say it wrong.
Inspire Day.
Inspire Day, Coper Spy Day, and for performers and the banners and any of the materials that they hand out for classes that might go there, students...
And for the...
Clothing, reenactment, all of those different things.
For the...
And the docent, and the, yeah, all those things are covered under that, supplies. This is helping the not-for-profit in the area, and it's a great thing, so that's all on schedule to be closed out. We just, through the Treasurer's Office, ordered all of the period clothing for them, and that's kind of like the last thing, and then we can close out that and get reimbursed, hopefully, in December and get the checks by January.
Okay.
And then we have a Town of Brookhaven. Again, this one is for the Senior Citizen Program at the Community Center. That's fifteen thousand dollars annually. You'll see that the two thousand and twenty-three, excuse me, was actually extended because not all of the money was used, so through the Treasurer's Office, they submitted to have an extension to be able to utilize all those funds, and they granted that, so they'll get to continue to submit invoices for that through February two thousand and twenty-five. The other grant will close out August two thousand and twenty-five. That's again, a hundred percent reimbursed with what we submit, and everything's been processed accordingly. And then, a private grant that the village received, but it, where really the pass-through is going for the Gardner Foundation and that, the LISC, I'm not sure what that stands for, but...
It's LISC, it's the boat building...
The boat building, right, so because they're refurbishing...
They are building a whaleboat.
Oh, they're building a whaleboat.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
From the Revolutionary War days, and Gardner Foundation agreed to fund the rest of the cost of the build, as well as a trailer, to cart the whaleboat around when it's completed, so that's...
It's like a walking museum?
It's, it will be, yeah, with Mark Sternberg.
Traveling museum, that's, that's amazing.
Yeah.
And that's fifty-fifty, so, that project's, they're almost done, they said, yeah.
They've already spent the amount that was required to meet the match.
And we were just the pass-through to actually apply for it as the village, but really, they're managing the whole thing, and it goes directly to them.
Gardner typically requires a not-for-profit partner and a municipality to, because a municipality, I don't believe, can apply on its own.
No, either way, either way, yeah, so you need that joining. Long-term grant planning, so, the village was gung-ho and excited that we were able to apply for and be awarded a pro-housing community approved this past October. So, we are, you are now a house, a pro-housing community, and that affords you a lot of extra bonus points to apply for any future grants that are about housing. So, we could do Downtown Revitalization, New York Forward, New York Main Street, Regional Council Capital Funds, Market New York Capital Grants, Long Island Investment Fund, Public Transportation Modernization Enhancement Programs. Many of these grants closed either July or September before we got, but they will open back up again. So, now that we have the pro-housing certification, the next time these grants open up, we can now go for them and, you know, we'll be able to get the points to actually get those grants. The village is also in the middle of that compound flood study that the USGS is doing right now. That's being funded through the Long Island Sound Study, not us. Phase one, they're creating an online tool for mapping and assigning flood risk, and they're using the village and their data. They recently put in little water meters in, even in Mill Creek right here, just to see what kind of drainage and influx of flooding that we're getting in these various areas, and they're using all that data to construct these models. And phase two is going to be actually creating this process-based model report for any area to use for their flood risk scenarios. They're hoping that'll be ready by two thousand and twenty-six. And also, since we're doing the Village Climate Resiliency Plan, once we have that in place, we can use those for points for, towards grants, and the Hazard Mitigation Flood Study, that'll also be able to get us an opportunity. Pending grants, so, the New York State Green Resiliency Grant, that was between the village and Mather Northwell for the infiltration basin that they have. That's a three-point-six-million-dollar project. We filled that out. That was due in August, and I think we're going to hear sooner than December, but they had originally told us we would hear if we were awarded that grant by December two thousand and twenty-four. I worked with VHB and our wonderful village employees to get a lot of the information for that grant, and the hospital as the not-for-profit, and it was, it's all based on their ER expansion project that they have going on. One that we're working on right now with our planning, and the GTO Group, is a new one that you're actually going to hear tonight about, two resolutions. The developers, the GTO Group, it's for demolition construction of an area that is fifteen-oh-six, fifteen-ten, fifteen to fifteen-twelve Main Street. It's to build one commercial store over, under forty-eight studio apartments. They're going to be targeting our young population, our young workforce that, you know, work at the hospital, work at the university, and also graduate students that are doing their internships to come and live here. There are going to be affordable housing, at least twenty percent of it. And we are, again, you can't go for this grant without being a municipality, and we'll be the go-between for GTO Group to actually do all the management and everything, so that's, we're looking for seven hundred and ninety thousand, but the project itself is about fourteen, fourteen million to construct that building. And then, very soon, we're going to be also applying for a local government records management improvement grant. This is going to be targeting to organize and digitize some of the archived village records, and then also disposing of any expired files that we can. The grant award is max seventy-five thousand. You can actually apply for that annually. I've done that before in the school district that I worked in, and that will help get you some room in this building too as well, so there's a lot of, you know, storage that is a lot of paper-based, and this is going to digitize it for you, that is easily accessed. And they actually use, we're going to meet with Queso Records Management. They're located in Manhattan, but they come out here. They only hire, they're on the New York State contracts, they only hire people with disabilities, so they're, they're actually giving work to those people, and I'm very excited to fill that out and get going on. And I'm very excited to fill that out and get going on that. Oh, yes, that's, doesn't cost the village anything, yes. Next week, next week's Queso's coming over.
That's exciting. We have a lot of loose papers hanging around.
And thank you very much.
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto our monthly reports. So today, I'm going to ask Trustee Laux to begin.
We're going to be reporting on two different things. First, the school district. The school working group met on October tenth to discuss the topics that they wanted to address with the school officials that was scheduled for October twenty-first. It was decided at that time to limit the discussion to the topics of school safety and communication between the village and the schools. On October twenty-first, the group met with the school superintendent and three school board members. Ellen Baum, Tracy Zamic and Tracy Donnelly were present. The topics for discussion were limited to the safety during arrival and dismissal and better communication between the village and the schools. The discussions were very positive and for the most part stayed on point. Some of the results and recommendations that came out of that meeting. The school felt that things were much improved with the addition of the code officer during dismissal at the high school and thanked the village for that. The school and the group offered the following recommendations going forward. That the village consider placing no standing signs on the opposite side of the road from the high school. That the village consider a way to create parking on one side of Longfellow Road during special events. That's where the communication came in. The communication is important, that the school notifies the village or vice versa of any special event. And if we're going to do it, we'd have to figure out a way of doing it, to make that one side of the street up there, one-side parking.
The recommendation was for the parking to be on the east side of Brook Road or Longfellow, which, which road?
Longfellow Road.
Which side do they want the parking on?
It would be on the west side.
On the west?
Right.
What, wait, Longfellow goes, runs east, east and west?
East, west.
So they want it going?
It would, it would be.
Eastbound or westbound?
They did not specify that. We'd have to take a look at it.
And then, and the no standing would be placed, I guess that would be a discussion with Public Works to see if and how something could be placed there.
Yeah.
And does that?
I don't know.
Clerk, do you, Clerk Pearl, do you know if that requires a board action or resolution or a public meeting or anything to put a no standing sign in a location? We can ask when Dave gets in, all right? Code change. Would it have to be added into the code, like into the list, but it's not a stop sign, though?
No.
Just a no standing sign? All right, we'll see.
The, the next recommendation was that the village consider assigning two code officers to the high school during the hours of, between seven and eight AM in the morning and two to three in the afternoon to help with the double parking, the U-turns.
Just traffic control issues?
Traffic control issues. I did explain to them that at the present time, our code does not report for work until ten AM. I believe we're negotiating a contract at the present time, so.
Contract expires in May.
Yeah.
So sometimes they report earlier for Farmer's Market and for other things.
I, I know that up at Scraggy, the chief has been going up there in the morning to help out with traffic control up there. It's not a constant presence, but the Scraggy, the Scraggy situation is of much, much less concern than the high school. As I've said at previous meetings, if you go up to the high school during dismissal time, if an emergency vehicle had to get up through there, fire truck, EMT, it might be impossible during those hours. It can become quite messy. Parents are constantly dropping the kids off there, picking the kids up there. They double park, they make U-turns, they pay very little attention to the school crossing guard. We did talk to the school crossing guard and he verified that as being a fact. So the recommendation was that perhaps we could consider code officers be assigned up there during those hours. They would also like, and this goes both ways, a procedure to improve communication. When a school runs a special event, we should know about it so that we can make the arrangements that they're suggesting. For example, that one side of the street parking up on Longfellow, we would have to know well in advance. How that could be worked out would be between the, I would assume, between the clerk's office and the superintendent's office up there. If we could have some kind of a master schedule of special events. That's pretty much what we discussed at the school. We're going to be having more meetings, I hope, with the, with the school board. As I said, we had just those two topics and I didn't want it to get out of control. So we stayed with those two topics at that meeting. Some announcements from the recreation department.
Can I ask a question related to that, that report? Did you see the flyer that the superintendent forwarded to me and then I forwarded, I think, to you and, and Trustee Hill?
Yes.
To, to share it with codes so that they could have awareness and?
And I believe Kyle shared it with Chief. Chief said he already had a copy of it, but there's going to be a complication going forward, I believe.
I don't. It's a schedule and we're asking code enforcement to, to be there for traffic control if needed or be, or awareness so that there aren't code violations, right?
Yes, I'm just wondering if there would be a way to inform the, somehow inform those residents ahead of time.
Code could drop copies of that off, we can ask code to drop copies of that document off to?
In the immediate area.
To the, to the residents in the immediate area. Since Attorney Moran's here, can we ask him about the, that, that thing we were just talking about?
Yes. To put no standing signs on a street of the village, do we need a public hearing? Can we?
Are your current, are your current, like, stop signs, no standing signs, those types of things codified in the code already?
Stop signs definitely are.
Then you need legislative equivalency to add additional signs.
If it's a no standing sign?
If it's going in the code, it would require a public hearing.
Oh, because it can be enforced, it's going in the code, so it requires, okay, all right.
Okay. Some announcements from the recreation department. I'm not sure that we have totally completed the rental rates up at the village center. Still getting a lot of questions about resident, non-resident, building only, the park only, a list of the not-for-profit organizations and so on and so forth. The ice skating boards.
Well, Xena can answer that, that.
Go, Xena.
Yeah, let me give you a status on that. So we met Tuesday to finalize some of the remaining items. The rates have been set at this point. We've set the rates for the event rentals for the full facility and addressed the, the additional parking when requested. And I expect to have that for resolution. In fact, I was going to request that that be included as a resolution for, for our next meeting. We should be ready to vote on that.
Yes.
When you say the entire facility, you're talking about the park and the building?
No, just referring to the park, I'm sorry, just referring to the building. So there are room rental rates and we have a number of village affiliated organizations, nonprofits, that often use the facility in its entirety, right? So, so we needed to figure out what that rate would be because if it was an à la carte rate, it would start pricing them out of it. So what we tried to do was address it in such a way that it would be an increase, but it would not be onerous to those organizations. And in addition to that, the, there is a policy that's being put in place that would be a twenty-five percent discount for residents on the room rentals and that extends to the event rates for the entire facility. Okay, that does not include the park itself because that is public land.
Do we have a list of the organizations, the not-for-profit?
We'll, we'll publish that with the rates as well. At, at least, there is one outstanding item that we still have to coordinate with the school board because we'd like to get an MOU in place because there are, there are facility usages that the village is getting in the school district's facilities and we'd like to ensure that that is reciprocated by the village, so.
Yeah, that's not a new issue.
Well.
We have met, we have met and talked about that previously.
Sure, but what we're trying to do is put something.
In writing.
In writing, so it's codified, so it doesn't matter.
Gotcha.
What year it is, yeah.
So they, they, the, they're auxiliary organizations like the PTSA and parent organizations outside of the PTSA that run things like the Sweetheart Dance or the Victorian Luncheon, they would, the way that they would work it is the same way we work it. If, if, if our recreation program wants to utilize a, a school district facility, she goes to the athletic director. So, and if the, if the parent organization wants to use a village facility, the parent organization would go to the school district and the school district would go to the facility management. So that's, that's how we kind of want to do it and so it's reciprocated and it's cost-neutral for, for both parties.
Right.
And where there is a cost, such as if the recreation program is using the pool, the village has to cover the costs of the lifeguard and the.
Custodian.
Custodian. And so those costs would be passed through as well if the, if there is a school auxiliary organization utilizing a village facility. So we want to put that in a, in a form, we want to formalize that agreement. And I think that'll help square things away into the future.
Okay.
Perpetuity, as they would say.
That'll work. The ice skating boards and the surface has been installed this week. They're going to start making ice this Friday. The scheduled opening for the skating rink is November twenty-ninth. The annual concert series is going to start on February seventh, the schedule, say what? It's going to be, they're going to have trouble making ice on Friday, I think.
Maybe held off.
But that's their schedule. The annual concert series is going to start on February seventh, the schedule has not been posted yet, but will be shortly. The Farmer's Market is still outdoors, however, if the weather is too cold, which it won't be, the center, if the center's available, we've made arrangements, they can move the Farmer's Market inside the center if it's available. The winter season programs have all been posted on the website, there's still a lot of openings in many of the programs, however, in capital letters, by the way, pickleball programs are all filled. So Bob, I don't know if you're in or not, but. And the last thing I have is that we're exploring the possibility of having preschool, a preschool skating program. We're going to meet with the athletic director and talk about that a little bit. We have to get numbers from the school. I don't know how many children are involved in the preschool program, if it would warrant that we go through this planning of the program. So I'm going to, I'll be getting numbers from the school district and that's pretty much what I have.
Excellent. Any questions for Trustee Laux? Okay. Trustee Juliana.
All right.
I'll just say, following Stan's report, can the two of you work together with Steve to try and figure out the, the sign recommendations and the parking recommendations from the school district, the working group?
Sure, we'll.
Does that make sense?
Get those recommendations, but then, as Dave said, if we need a code change or something.
Establishing the, the public hearing and what the content of that would be, how it would be described, that kind of thing.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, DPW, they completed the repainting of various turn lanes, traffic directionals, crosswalks, handicap parking spots, et cetera, throughout the village. They've continued asphalt repair to village roads, filling potholes and creating or repairing berms on the sides of the streets. They've been conducting winter season truck prep, getting ready for whatever kind of winter weather we're going to have, so they'll make sure that everything's ready to go should, should the need arise. And they've removed the obstacle parking meters, the obsolete parking meters, I'm sorry, from the different, from the parking lots throughout the, throughout the village. Parks update, parks have planted over two hundred mums and they planted four new trees throughout the village. Those four new trees were, were from the PSENG through the Chamber of Commerce. So they've planted those, those trees in, in the downtown area. Completed the wood siding on the East Beach Building and they replaced the paint port, big pink, port pink banners with the, with holiday decorations. So you see that holiday decorations are up. I attended the Long Island Sound Coastal Resilience Forum in Riverhead with about eight other members of various village committees here. And the topics include, the topics included sea level rise, climate threats, creating resilient shorelines, and we took a field trip to a nearby Iron Pier Beach to view firsthand a bluff restoration project, plantings that they did on the bluff to, to, to keep the bluff from, from erosion.
How was that?
It was very, the bluff was not as extensive as our, as the, the issue that we have with It was very, the bluff was not as extensive as our, as the, the issue that we have with our bluff.
What jurisdiction is that in?
Uh, town of Riverhead.
And was it the town that, um, restored it or reforested?
It was actually, uh, through the town as well as, um, Meadstone. The, the, there's a, there's a, a facility right above it. And it, it was a partnership with, uh.
Oh, okay.
Private and, and, and the town.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, so, it's, it's all replanted and planting, they, they planted seagrass, and the seagrass is, is taking and actually spreading, so, which is exactly what they, what they had planned. Like I said, their bluff was not as, as extensive or not as steep as, as our bluff, but it was something to look at. Um, and so, something to keep in mind when we have further problems. We had the coffee with a cop, uh, meeting hosted by the village at the village center. It was a great success. The meeting was well represented by a number of Suffolk County police officers and village residents, and everybody seemed to, uh, to enjoy it, and it was good to, on an informal basis, for the village residents to meet with the, uh, with Suffolk County Police and just get an idea of what's going on and talk about different problems that, that, uh, might have been going on in, in the village. Uh, I attended a recent department head meeting, and once again, it was great to see all the department heads getting along well with each other and cooperating and working together and trying to, you know, to share each other's problems or share, you know, how to solve each other's problems, so. Uh, it's always a, a good thing to see. We had the first kickoff meeting, actually just yesterday, uh, with the Village Walkability Group. They discussed some, came up with goals and objectives for the group, working with the CAC. And they're going to be meeting with the CAC at the next meeting in November, just to, to.
That's fantastic.
Just to have that discussion and then see how, how to go, go further from there. And my next Saturday sit-down is November sixteenth, uh, over at the village center. And that'll be from eleven to, I'm sorry, nine thirty to eleven, on the sixteenth, and that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, um, trustee Hell.
Thank you. So, for the month of October, there is a, uh, the Harvest Fest, uh, village-wide event, no incidents or issues, which is great. And then, uh, incident report recap for the month of October, total forty-five, where they aided assisted agency or disturbance and, and traffic conditions. Recap on summonses, there was five hundred and ninety-seven, uh, mostly same, uh, kinda what we're used to seeing. Overtime parking meter was three hundred and fifty-six, uninspected vehicles was a hundred and sixteen. Uh, overtime parking on the street was thirty-eight, and then parking without a permit, thirty-three. Uh, and then a few others. And then, an update on the two speed readers that we have. Uh, these are numbers for month of October. Uh, this is the one on North Country Road right before Larita Gate. Uh, Octo- so, month of October again, number of vehicles that passed was ninety-five thousand plus. The average speed was thirty-six miles per hour, that's a thirty mile per hour spot, so, uh, code is asking folks to please slow down. Uh, and then the second speed reader, uh, eastbound on Old Post Road toward Jefferson Landing Circle. That one's, was installed back in September, so this is the first, uh, full month that we have. Uh, the total number of vehicles were forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven, and the average speed was twenty-eight miles per hour. But there were high, like, I think the highest was sixty miles per hour.
Wow.
Which so, and then even on Larita Gate, the highest was seventy-something.
Yeah.
So, there are certainly.
Outliers.
Big speed incidences, which are, you know, obviously the problem is the incidences, not the average, so.
Right.
Please do slow down.
So, we can, we can give that information to, um, officer John or officer Barry and ask them to look into that.
Okay, and then, uh, echo, uh, deputy mayor Giuliano's words on Coffee with a Cop. It was nice to see our, uh, six precinct liaisons in a more social setting, and it was a gorgeous day, that day. Uh, it was nice to have the gates up and just, uh, inside-outside kinda thing. It was a really nice, uh, utilization of village resources as well. Uh, the Public Safety Advisory Committee met on Monday. Uh, we didn't have any formal recommendations that came out of this meeting, but some of the things are looking into. Want to start having a conversation with the ferry company and just, there's always gonna be, you know, ferry traffic. And one of the, uh, problems that was probably easily solved is there's a lack of understanding on the drop-off area, and that you can go into the town lot to drop folks off. And if you don't know that, you might be more inclined to drop off, um, in the street, uh, which is obviously, there's no space for any of that. But we think it could be the appearance that looks like you have to pay to get into the town lot, so just gonna start, start having that conversation to see if there's anything we can do to just help inform folks a little bit better. Uh, and then the next meeting would be, uh, December second.
Okay, I, we received a resignation, um, Melissa Gianola. And so, um, I think I might have a candidate for replacement if. That's, there's, it's in the code, right, it's, there's a certain number of members, if I'm not mistaken.
You're remembering correctly, yeah, I think it's nine is the, what's in the code, yeah.
So, I think I have someone who's interested in participating. Did you wanna say something, Xena?
I, I just had a question. I was wondering if, uh, you might be able to, you know, as you know, I'm a data girl, right? So, um, it feels as if when we get the tickets, ticket reports, that, you know, it's just a point in time. And perhaps we could start just adding to the spreadsheet that we're receiving so that it's a cumulative spreadsheet, so that we can start doing some trend analysis. Yeah. Thank you.
Is that the, is that the report that Rita provides?
Yeah.
Okay. So, trustee Ugrinsky, your turn.
Thank you, mayor, all right. I wanna cover off on the work that the, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee has been doing. And, um, I've, I've already addressed the, the rec center rentals. Uh, what I'd like to do is share that that group has now turned its attention to the golf course budget. And, um, you know, our, our, our intent is to help them stay flat to budget. And given we're approaching the half, halfway mark of the year, um, it's a good time to really look at where we sit versus budget and actuals. And, um, and also to use that as an exercise to prepare for the, the next fiscal year budget. So, we've been meeting with them, and, um, and they're working on the rates. Uh, the Board of Governors, sorry, is working on the rates. But, uh, the Board of, the Budget and Finance Committee is working on an analysis of the actuals year-to-date versus last year versus prior year. And, um, and just so that we can have an effective conversation about what the budget needs to, to look like for, for next year, and potentially address, uh, the existing shortfall. Um, we are also working with the treasurer to enable variance reporting out of the current admin system. So, the phase one of that effort will be, uh, to provide this body a monthly report that is a, a budget versus actuals variance on, across the board. Um, so that we can have insight as to, uh, the warrants that we're approving and, and the, um, financial implications. So, that is just documented as part of our minutes, et cetera. Uh, the phase one will be the Board of Trustees. Phase two will be department head reporting so that they can, um, well, be, um, more informed as they are being held accountable to, uh, spending. And from a forward-looking perspective, uh, all of that work is geared up to prepare for the budget cycle for next year. As well as performing expense analysis to better inform that budget cycle, and that is across the board. So, village in totality, capital budgets, operating expenses. And to really address where we can, um, where we can, uh, manage expenses. Uh, where can we increase revenues to ensure that next year's budget, as we put it in place, is something that we can, one, uh, manage to and hit. And, two, um, represents what we ought to be spending as a village of our size, but with our complexities. And that, uh, yeah, that concludes my report. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll just jump off one of the things that you were talking about, Xena, uh, for my, to start my report. And that is that, uh, as, uh, was referenced, the Board of Governors is meeting to, um, discuss rates for next year. They will be sharing their recommendations with the CCMAC for review and discuss, further discussion. And then, from there, what is agreed upon will be shared with the, uh, Board of Trustees for, um, establishing, voting on establishing the rates for next year. So, um, it's in progress, and, uh, I would expect, anticipate some information coming to us for the next meeting, November twentieth. So, just some quick updates from the building and planning area. Uh, there is a planning board meeting on Thursday this week. Um, there are eight items on the agenda, the meeting will take place in this room. Um, it's, I believe it begins at six o'clock or six-thirty. One of those things of interest is, I think the Pi is interested in expanding their, um, restaurant space to the area next door, which is formerly a hair salon. So, that's interesting. So, the department received eighteen new building and planning applications, um, in the last thirty days. Ten building permits were issued, and eight certificates of compliance, certificates of occupancy were issued this past month. Doesn't include, why would it, but they also received forty-six foils and fifty-eight were responded to over this period of time. So, there is a meeting of the, uh, zoning board of appeals coming up, and where they will be hearing one presentation, variance request, and I believe that is on the, twenty-first. I can tell you for sure in a sec. Yeah, it's on the twenty-first, and that will take place here as well. So, there's a meeting this week to discuss the location of where that whaleboat that's being constructed will be placed. So, there's been a lot of conversations back and forth about locations because, um, the whaleboat needs a permanent facility to protect it from the weather, elements of the weather, and, um, to keep it, uh, safe, sound, and seaworthy. So, um, there is a timber guild that builds these sheds at their, they take these projects on pro bono. And the, uh, Lysac folks have been talking to them. And, um, there, we're meeting this week to discuss possible locations for that shed. And that shed will be basically the educational sort of facility for the whaleboat that, um, our historians, uh, are going to use for those purposes of bringing in groups and, um, touring and, you know, during the spy ring day and that kinda thing. So, uh, they want a permanent facility, and they're, again, they're gonna be, we're discussing that to, I think it's the, maybe next week, the twelfth. And I don't know, Bob, if you planned on being there or not, but you're certainly welcome. I think it was just landed on today, the date. Yeah, Rita should have it. Then, so, the parking committee, uh, recommended and the board approved last week, I guess, the implementation of two-hour parking limits on Mill Creek Road, just like there are limits on Main Street and East Main Street, Arden, and West Broadway. There's no, uh, metered parking there. So, they brought that into Mill Creek Road to make that a, a free two-hour parking limit space. So, in, out, quick, quick runs, dinner, whatever. The parking committee recommended that, and the board codified it. So, if you walk down there, you will see that, um, those spots are labeled as such. There's also an MOU being worked on right now, uh, and I think it's been passed on to our village attorney with Chase Bank that would broker a relationship between the bank and the village to utilize the parking spaces behind the bank, um, during the off-hours when the bank is not open. So, Chase has approved the, the agreement in, um, principle, as has the village, and now it's just going through the legal process. And we have to figure out enforcement and other matters related to that. But I think everybody, especially the people who live over Chandler Square, will be very happy with that arrangement because it will be resident parking only. Then, uh, there is a meeting of the bid Business Improvement District, uh, next Thursday, I believe, the fourteenth. Followed by a meeting of the, hold on, I might be wrong. The bid meeting's on Tuesday, the twelfth. And then, followed by a meeting of the Economic Opportunity Task Force, so they're back-to-back. Those will be at the village center, they're both open meetings for anyone who wants to attend. What else? I wanted to, Stephen, talk to you and, a little bit about, and, um, and because you're the commissioner for Public Works, there has been a request from the, uh, parking committee to place, and, and also, Xena, glad you're here too, because this could involve the CEC program, of putting, uh, um, putting, putting covers up over the, the new parking meters, so it's easier to see during the day when there's a lot of glare and to kinda protect the, the meters as well. So, to install those, those covers, and I don't know if, if they are, uh, if there's anything related to solar energy or anything like that, but, I mean, if we, we have some funds outstanding, do we not, from, that we are eligible for from that National Grid program?
So, there are, uh, a couple of things, actually, since you mentioned the CEC and, and for, for folks who hate acronyms as much as I do, um, that is the Clean Energy Communities Program through NYSERDA. We have, um, we have a kickoff meeting on Wednesday. Stephen, you'll, you'll be getting, uh, an invite to that. But I'll be meeting with Stephen and Lisa to discuss, uh, the, the current status, the things that we've done in the meantime that qualify us for NYSERDA funds. Many of those funds in that program are a direct, uh, check right to the village, right? Some of the larger things are a fifty-fifty share. We're going to be going through them and determining what we've already accomplished on that list because we're already involved in that program.
Great. And so, this might involve, I don't, I don't know if these will qualify for that program in any way. Just wondering if we put solar panels on them or something like that, if that.
We'll, we'll be lining those up, right? Because that's, that's the meeting where we're going to take everything that, that we're looking at as a village now and going forward, and the things that we've already accomplished that we should be getting a check for, and reconciling that and figuring out a path forward. And I expect that ultimately, you know, that there will be a plan in front of you for that.
And so, Bob and, and Stephen, I, if you could kinda get together with Steve Gallagher and talk about that, because that would involve, potentially involve some work with, uh, DPW. But also, what do they look like, what are they? I, I can't imagine that the parking committee didn't have some, uh, something in mind that they wanted. they wanted to use to cover those.
Um, in speaking with the Parking Committee, there, there wasn't, uh, an actual design or idea what, uh, you know, in mind. There's no product that they were looking at. They just want some type of sh, kind of all-weather shelter that could be lit at night and protect the meters during the day from the weather, so that patrons, if it's pouring rain and they need to use the meter, there could be a little shelter while they're using it. At night, it's lit up so that people feel a little safer-
Uh-huh.
-walking up to the meters. Um, so, there will need to be some research and, um, trying to get some quotes of, of different products, and go back and forth to see what works for everybody.
Good time to do it. I got a request, this is another Public Works request, parks, maybe two, but, um, to look at the curbs around the tennis courts that eat tennis balls. There's like a space between the, the curb bound, boundary and the fence, and the tennis balls go under, behind that and under the fence. So, the recommendation request was, would the village consider filling in those, that, that space between the fence and the curbs? If it would be possible to do that, so that it would protect from those circumstances Then, so, we received from, uh, NICOM, a request to consider a resolution, and so this came in today, so, uh, I asked, uh, the clerk to, to pass this out, have it in, on your desk, and it's, we, I think the village does this every year at the request of NICOM. It's, it's when, um, uh, they are seeking support in maintaining state aid for local governments, and local governments resolve and make it official through resolution to, uh, requests that that be maintained to, um, their Assembly Representatives. So, um, and the Governor, and the Senator, and the Senate. So, this is the sample resolution, and, um, if anyone has any questions or concerns about it, um, we can talk to Attorney Moran if we need to. I think this is pro forma, basically, and, um, if we put it into the agenda for next, for the next meeting, we can, we can make that resolution possible there. So, just wanted to put that on your radar. What else? The Conservancy is having a fundraiser on, yeah, Bob, do you want to talk about that? That's, that's more up your alley.
Yeah. Um, it's a very unique thing that they're doing, they're, they're almost setting it up as a, as a speakeasy, and it's a roaring twenties, um, the name is escaping me now.
Zoot suits.
Thank you. And it's over at, uh, where Nan Gazetta was, was located, where, where she used to, uh, conduct business, and Dave Gazetta now, now owns it, and it's going to be, um, a, a fantastic, um, event there. They're going to have different entertainment. Um, I, I'll be there, and I'll be dressing up in nineteen-twenty's garb, and, um-
That's worth the price of admission.
And, and we're encouraging, I mean, you know, people to, to come in and dress in costumes if, if they want to. They're gonna be honoring Barry Warren and, uh, and Rob Gito, um, we'll be getting, uh, two, two different awards, um, and they're, you know, the Conservancy is hoping to make this an annual, an annual event, that they will be honoring people within, uh, within the community, so.
We're very grateful to the Conservancy Board for putting this together. Um, the village, obviously, is the, is a strong partner, is in strong partnership with the Conservancy. The Conservancy is the fundraising arm for the village, uh, whereas the village in its, uh, in its municipal structure is not a fundraising entity, but, um, can partner with a fundraising not-for-profit, and so that's what is happening. Um, that's what the Conservancy has been doing over the past, Fort Jefferson Harbor Arts and Education Conservancy has been doing over the past twenty, twenty-four years, since the actual Village Center was created. That's kind of where that, when that started. So, we're grateful to them, we're gonna help promote it if we can, and hopefully ticket sales are, you, do you know anything about how tickets are selling?
Yeah.
I know they're getting great sponsorships.
They get, they have great sponsorship, the tickets are going well, but, you know, we could always use more people to, to attend.
And the Boogie Hotel?
Mm-hmm.
Is, is worth-
It's historic, yes.
It's worth the, the price of admission as well. It's be, I mean, what they did to, to make that a facility that is welcoming to events and activities, it's, it's an amazing, beautiful event, and, uh, it used to be where Fog Hat was, uh, it was a recording studio.
Yeah.
That's why they call it the Boogie Hotel. And the Gazetteers will show you around if you're interested in seeing it. It's, it's worth, it's worth seeing, definitely. What else? Thank you. So, great news. Everybody drives along Liberty Avenue, right? And, uh, you, you run up that roadway and you run into the, the repair that was sort of done, but the, the work that Suffolk County Water Authority did on that road and on the roads in that area, including, um, Division Street, uh, William Street, Jones, um, they did some work on East Broadway, Grant Street, a bunch of streets, and the roads are a mess, right? So, they have, uh, we've been working with them, and some members of our community and the Department of Public Works, and, uh, we were able to work out a situation where, Suffolk County Water Authority is going to repave those roads from curb to curb. So, very exciting. It is a lot of money, um, and they are going to, uh, we're, we're, we're working with the, um, paving company to, to procure and produce the end result of the project, and they're gonna cut the check. So, we're so grateful to the Water Authority for that, and, um, and to, uh, the people in our community are gonna be so happy to hear that their roads are going to be flat and even again, so, es, especially Liberty Avenue. So, uh, there's a resident who's written to us a couple times about Liberty, and so I'm looking forward to reaching out to her and letting her know that, that the road's gonna be repaired and smooth. So, thank you, Clerk Perilla, for that. We have a resolution tonight for this, do we not? Can we vote on this tonight to accept this, this funding?
We, we can and we should due to the time-sensitive nature, ma'am.
Okay.
Would you like us to have a resolution at this time? It would be Resolution Number Zero-One-One-One-Zero-Six-Two-Four, Resolution Ratifying the Attached Agreements, there are three, for payment in lieu of restoration between the Suffolk County Water Authority and the Village of Fort Jefferson, and ratifying the authorization of Mayor Shepro to sign the agreements on behalf of the Village of Fort Jefferson. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, motion carries.
Thank you.
Let the work begin. Thank you for reminding me about that. I think that's, uh, that ends my report for today. Clerk Perilla, would you like to begin your report? And don't be brief.
Thank you, ma'am. I had initially requested on behalf of the General Manager for resolutions for the Country Club. I subsequently requested a phone meeting today between myself, the Treasurer, and the General Manager. There will only be three, excuse me, there will be three deleted resolutions, and there will only be one on the upcoming meeting on the twentieth. The one that we have decided to keep, if you would, will be the one for chemicals and fertilizer, and that is the annual RFP for the golf course. The others, we are holding back a little bit, timing-wise, until we have a better grasp of the funding elements for those. Okay? So, I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, so that we don't go out of process. Better to stay in process. For Boards and Committees, I would like to thank Elizabeth Kidney, who will now serve as Secretary to the Board of Ethics, and who has already asked me to remind everyone that the next Board of Ethics meeting will be held on the thirteenth at five-thirty here in Village Hall. Regarding the training portion of my report, I wanted to also add that mandatory annual training is taking place tomorrow and also early December. So, I wanted to make everyone aware of that. Lastly, in terms of our website, I would like to thank Teresa Scoggin. She has, effective yesterday, um, completed the final piece of the redesign. I'm sure that there will be tweaks as we move forward, but the major portions have been completed. Steve Gallagher and I had an early meeting at eighty-eight North Country Road this morning with a representative from Belfour, and we created a lovely schematic and decided what the finishing will be for the building. We should have representative quotations for everything that was decided by this Friday. After that point and upon approval of pricing, it will take approximately two weeks, and then restoration of the building will be finished. Restoration and remediation will be completed. So, that's exciting, and we're looking forward to that. During Lisa Mattow's presentation, we briefly touched on two resolutions that are grant-related that you'll be, that we will be voting on, on the twentieth, that are required. One is to schedule a public hearing for December eighteenth, and that's for the Baxter, the, excuse me, the Baxter Project, which is fifteen-oh-six and fifteen-ten to fifteen-twelve Main Street, so we touched on that already. The second is also related to the same project, and it's to approve a municipal resolution that is a requirement under the Restore Grant Round Nine. And Trustee Ugrinsky, I think you are going to report on the assessor portion of my report, unless anyone has questions.
Thank you, Clerk.
You're welcome.
Good news, bad news?
Yes. Um, okay, so, uh, before I get to sort of the public notice portion of that, I, I want to, first of all, congratulate our tax assessor, Paul Domato, for winning the seat for Town of Smithtown Fourth District Court Judge. Um, he will be departing, excuse me, at the end of the, the calendar year, and we currently have, um, five to seven potential replacements, but we will start looking for those, and, um, I, I think that gives us enough time to, to properly vet them and, um, ensure that there's a transition period so that he's able to train them, whoever his replacement is. A couple of other things, the current senior and veteran exemption application for residents, that filing period is between November first and November thirty-first, uh, I'm sorry, December thirty-first, and, um, the senior exemption, uh, renewal applications are ready and about to be mailed. All of the non-for-profit renewal applications have been sent already. Deadline is the end of this calendar year, December thirty-first, and are being reviewed as, as they're coming in. And the reminder, the senior exemption reminder, postcards are being mailed out, uh, between November twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh. And that is, uh-
Maybe we put that up on, uh, social.
Yeah, I think, I think that should be on the website, for sure.
That people know.
Yep. All right, and, thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you. Unless there are any questions.
That's it?
That's it. Sorry to be brief.
You're, you're not busy enough.
We'll, we'll change that.
Okay. Uh, Stephen, Treasurer Gaffka.
I don't think I can be brief, but, thank you. I, I just want to start first with a resolution that I'm gonna request to be voted on tonight. Just for a little background, and then I'll read the resolution. The Drowned Meadow Cottage Grant for ten thousand that we do every year, there's a requirement to spend all of the money and have all the checks cleared by the end of December each year. Uh, you know, through the process of trying to go back and forth with the docents, we were able to finally get, uh, an, a list of the clothing items that they need for the museum and supplies. However, the place that they would like to purchase these supplies through will only accept a credit card. So, I have a resolution requesting the use of the credit card. It is just about fifteen hundred dollars, so it's within the procurement for, you know, for a purchase order, um, for one quote, uh, and I'll read the resolution, uh, and I'd ask, uh, the Board to vote on it tonight. Resolution authorizing the use of the village credit card for the purchase of materials and supplies from Townsend, Inc., for the Drowned Meadow Cottage Museum, in compliance with the Drowned Meadow Cottage Suffolk County Grant, and in compliance with the official village credit card policy, with such use authorization due to the requirement that all expenses for reimbursement be completed and clear the bank by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, in order to be eligible for reimbursement.
Excuse me, which resolution shall be known as Resolution Number Oh-Two-One-One-Zero-Six-Two-Four?
Thank you, Clerk.
Can you say that resolution number again?
I can.
Your microphone was off.
Thank you. Resolution Number Oh-Two-One-One-Zero-Six-Two-Four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Then on to the other resolutions. Uh, I have several, uh, two resolutions creating several new line items in regards to the, to the actual budget lines, and capital fund and general fund. Um, this is all part of the cleanup and admins of the account codes to get them more in line with what the, the state would like in terms of, you know, being able to follow the classification of the code to what you're, what you're receiving. So, federal aid, um, there's a lot of different classifications which you can look up, but they all typically start with four-nine. So, I have some of those resolutions in here. Um, do I, is there any questions on that? Um, and then, uh, I'll let the Board lead me into, if there's any questions on the other resolutions, 'cause there's quite, there's a number of them, if anything popped up.
Uh, Treasurer, or do you want to make note of the, um, the Renee Tidwell replacement for me? Just, we've not voted on that officially, have we?
I don't believe so. I think that's gonna be a resolution for the regular reading.
That was on, yes, thank you. That was part of my report, so, so that we can, it's a housekeeping item, frankly, so that we can add it on to the twentieth.
Okay, great. And then, my last question is, if you were to apply a percentage to how far in the work you are of cleaning up the financial system, so that it reflects accurately year over year, um, according to government accounting, like, where are we on that cleanup? So, how far along? Like, are we eighty percent, fifty percent?
I, I would say about three-quarters of the way.
Okay.
Uh, you know, through, there's some, there's some back-ground software coding that needs to happen in order for additional information to be available, like variance reports on a month-to-month basis. There's some builds that we need to do with the budget process that could help kind of show, uh, this Board, you know, I give you these expense and revenue reports, but they're just totals. It doesn't quite tell you the story of, well, you know, everything comes and goes in different waves over the year. Where are we compared to previous years at this time period? So, um, we're trying to work on building that up, which is what Trustee Ugrinsky's referring to, in order to have better analysis and better information available for the Board, so that when they vote on the abstracts and spending, it can, you just have a better idea of what they are voting on, um, and it's not just blind trust that everything is just being done right.
And, and let me first apologize for all the additional work I've been piling on you, so, I, let me acknowledge, again, you know, the system work that you're doing, the cleanup work that you're doing, and, and the work that you're doing to enable us to properly manage going forward, so thank you for that.
That's not a problem. Um, I just want to touch on a couple other things. The capital asset valuation, I heard back from the company that's gonna be coming out in person to do, uh, the valuation. They want to come out, uh, the third week of November, the eighteenth through the twenty-second, which is Monday through Friday. I'm gonna try and schedule the availability of our different departments so that they can have access to all of the equipment, um, and areas, so that they can get in there and actually record all of our actual capital assets. so that they can get in there and actually record all of our actual capital assets and see if there's any missing documentation or information that they might need so that we can, by the end of fiscal 2025, have that material weakness taken off of the audit and then move forward. Did speak with our new independent auditors who were here a little over a week ago that they made a note on the material weakness side that this is in process. We are working to get that cleaned up so that we could have a better feel for what our asset position is for the General Fund and the Country Club and Capital.
I'm sorry, Treasurer Gaffka. I just want to highlight the fact that that particular fixed asset inventory is likely going to fall into the category of one of the CEC categories that we can get NYSERDA funding for. And it's possible that we can also get funding for resources to help that inventory be performed. So we'll discuss that on Wednesday.
That sounds, that sounds great. That'll, that document, once it's created, will be something that will be updated on a year-to-year basis and can be used for a variety of different potential grants.
And fixed asset tracking and the appropriate depreciations, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah.
So we're, yes, we're, I'd say about 85% of the way through the yearly audit. We're doing some finishing touches on information that they still need from the Treasurer's office. And then they're going to finish up doing their work. The annual financial report should be uploaded within the next two weeks to the state so that that will finally be completed. And then we'll work on scheduling the auditors to come out and meet with the Budget and Finance Committee, have the draft reports issued to the board and then present to the whole board at a public meeting once that's all ready to go. All the new parking meters have been installed. Special thank you to the DPW Department and Jared Hafner, who was instrumental in helping get my office and the park and T2 and ITS, who helped install these meters, get them in. They, after a few initial hiccups, they all seem to be working well. They're communicating now with the enforcement software, have the actual revenue information on the back end. And they're, they're completely controllable from the back office within Village Hall. So rates can be issued. We don't have to go through a third party to do it. It can be done right in the Treasurer's Office to send different rates out, different days, you know, different messaging if somebody determines that we want a different message on the meters. And so, which is a big plus. That was not available to us prior, which is now available to us. Touched on all of the Finance Committee. There's one, one grant I just want to clarify on that was touched on during the grant presentation. That's the 4615 Grant, the FEMA, the Old Homestead Recharge Basin. It's actually a 9010 grant. One of my resolutions is correcting some of the funding back and forth so that it's more clear in the new budget lines what is actually going to be reimbursable and what we're on the hook for. It's roughly $123,000 that the village will be on the hook for. And it's about a little over $1,023,000 that the village will receive in reimbursement for, for that particular project. But just want to clarify that.
I'm sorry to get a little technical on you. Is that then breaking it out into sub-accounts in the system? Technically, or is it like a natural account level?
So getting into the weeds, I have, I'm going to have an actual, there will be in the budget, in the capital budget, a revenue line specifically tied to the aid for that project. And there will be an expense line, a new one, that's more in line with the actual accounting codes for the state for that project only. And then once it's closed, never to be used again. And we'll move to the next, the next number. And I'll open it now for, I'll try and be brief now.
Now.
Too late.
And, I'm sorry. And lastly, the Treasurer and I are working together with our financial consultant, Charlene Kegel, to further education internally and create and hold a workshop for employees regarding the new procurement policy and manual check request policy. That, we anticipate that happening in early December.
Yes. Thank you, Clerk.
You're welcome.
Okay, two things I thought of while others were speaking. One is that Parks and Rec meeting was scheduled for tonight but got postponed. Well, so we're trying to get their feedback on, or raise their awareness about the rate proposal for the Village Center. So, and it's probably a good idea to show the Conservancy those rates too. So can, can you work with Trustee Juliana to get those rate, that rate structure shared and any feedback that they might have? And the other thing we, that, do you want to add to that before I go on to this next subject?
I just want to say, Bob, maybe we can connect first thing in the morning? Does that work for you?
Yep.
And we'll, and we'll just go through the final and figure out what the comms plan would be to those orgs.
So Trustee Ugrinsky and I met with Nancy Uzo from Mather Northwell yesterday. It was yesterday, right?
Yes.
And to discuss sort of putting in place a memo of understanding of all the things that we do and they do in the village and we do with them so that it is not an unanticipated or it's not just an expected thing without really a real understanding about, we're all in, we know what's going on, we know what our commitment is year over year, again, into perpetuity. So like every year, we get notification that Paint Port Pink is upon us and here are all your banners and your Parks people can hang them. So this year, we, we put that, we made a resolution. Did we get a permit from them or no for that? So we just have to make this more official so that those that come after us and after Nancy and after whomever have this documentation of all the interactions and things that we do together, collaborations that we work on together. The Walk for Hope, the Paint Port Pink. They have an event in the Village Center, a women's health update event and things like that. So just to have a list, an ongoing list of what we do together will help prevent surprises, unanticipated things from happening, right? So that, and, yeah, those, those were the two extra things that occurred to me while everybody else was talking. Attorney Moran, do you have any updates for us? Okay, I think this is the time when we will be moving into executive session. So do I have a motion for moving into executive session?
Motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.